Thanks, everybody. I am going to call to order the June 14th, 2022 meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. If you can, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. With the flag that would be here, we'll just do it anyway.
We're gonna pretend.
Got it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we're doing this on the side. Excellent. Thank you. Mary, can you please do the roll call?
Palmer.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Granland.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Zymet. Severson. Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next, we'll move on to the Agenda Approval Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agendas presented?
So moved.
Molly.
Second.
And second by Mary. Any discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to announcements. On June 21st, 5:30, we'll have a school board work session here in the community room. June 28th, Tuesday at 7 o'clock, we'll have a regular school board meeting here in the community room. And July 19th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, we'll have a regular school board meeting here in the community room. Next, we'll move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Vice Chair Mueller, there's no correspondence at this time.
Great, thank you. We will next move to the citizens and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board, and the board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow up. There is no one here in the community room, so no one here to speak to the board. Next, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes the Personnel Report from June 14th of 2022, the School Board Minutes from May 10th of 2022, May 17th Work Session 2022, and the May 24th 22 Meeting. Also includes the Employee Handbook that was presented at a previous meeting, as well as the Policy Second Reading for 204 School Board Meeting Minutes, 205 Open Meetings and Closed Meetings, 207 Public Hearings, 208 Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies, and 305 Policy Implementation. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Mary?
Second.
And second by Molly. Any discussion? Hearing none, received a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentience? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Discussion Reports and Information Items, starting with reports from members of the board. Mary, would you like to begin?
Oh, sure. So, trying to remember all of the things that have happened in the last few weeks. I attended the Fun Run at Valley View, and it was fantastically well-attended. I think there were over 200 people signed up for that Fun Run, and actually, some former Valley View students returned, and they're already starting to anticipate next year's Fun Run, which will be the 10th anniversary of it. So it's pretty exciting, and they're thinking about trying to loop in Columbia Academy as well, just because it is kind of a big deal. The last day of school parties from elementary school, attended graduation, and I'm positive I'm missing other things. I think the only other thing was that I was able to attend the signing of the Student Data Privacy Bill yesterday as a guest of Representative Weiss. So that was pretty interesting, a lot of fun to be able to be there and get a souvenir, sort of a law sign that was signed by the governor as well. So really fantastic work, and it sounds like it was the work of a lot of people over a number of years, and I think something that people were really excited about to have and to get through. And if I miss something, I apologize. Those are the things I can think of, so thank you. Molly?
Thank you. I was able to attend a couple of days of our Section Track Meets and also the Highland Walkthrough of the Graduates, which is honestly one of my favorite things. It was really neat to see so many kids go back there, the teachers remembering them and not recognizing them, and all of the fun things that went along with that. It was really cool. Also attended graduation, the All Night Party, and then the State Track Meet where we had five participants, and I just want to say congratulations to them all, but a special shout-out to Ben Olson, who placed second in Long Jump in the state, which is huge, and also ninth for High Jump. So congratulations to all of them, though. That's it. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Laura?
Yeah. I actually had a busy couple of weeks. I attended the Columbia Academy Concert over at the high school. Amazing job those kids did, especially, you know, being shorted a year, basically, having to do that self, doing the lessons over Zoom. But, boy, they really did. I mean, the progress that they made, and they worked so hard. It was really an incredible event, and I wasn't sure I would enjoy it as much not being a parent of a band student, but I found I loved it every bit as much. And big compliments out there to all the staff, just putting on such a wonderful show, and it's a beautiful space. I also attended the 916 Monthly Board Meeting as well, and the 916 Foundation Meeting the following morning. I was able to attend a graduation for the, through 916, for Eastview Academy, and partially with Metro Heights. Trying to remember what else I did that day. They did a great job in that those secondary schools with how many students were able to actually graduate this year. There were over 200 students that managed to graduate. So they really just did a tremendous job, and the students worked so hard on their credit recovery. So very, very proud of every one of them. They worked so incredibly hard for that. And I think that ends my report.
Great, thank you, Laura.
Laurenian? Correction. Six athletes were at state. Five were on Saturday that I watched. So I just wanted to make sure enough that.
Great, thank you. Yes, appreciate that.
For my report, I attended the State Synchronized Swimming Meet over two days, and we had, now you're gonna make me count, seven students. A six-person team and a duet. One person swam both the duet and the team, so they both swam. Both events were exhibition for our swimmers. They did a great job. It was fun to see the state meet back at the U of M this year, so that was exciting. Also attended graduation. I think one of our favorite days of the year, and it was just really great to see so many people there supporting our graduates, so that was a lot of fun. Had several conversations with community members throughout the last several weeks, and attended the chair meeting prior to this. Superintendent Stenbik, you have a report for us today.
I do. First, I'd like to thank everyone who had a hand in preparing for and carrying out the 2022 graduation ceremony. It was lovely, and a lot goes into preparing for that event. Also, Principal Nguyen, Activities Director Henderson, and I attended the end-of-the-year Tri-Metro Conference Meeting, and we're looking forward to another competitive season next year. It was great this year. I attended the annual Columbia Heights Public Schools Powell and got to see Member Palmer there as well. And I'd like to thank the Parent Committee for their efforts in carrying out what was a lovely event as well. Our district team, working with the Minnesota Department of Education Compass Program, finished up our five-month training, and we will now begin training within our own district here on multi-tiered systems of support. And I was able to have conversations with Member Granland at the Fun Run, Member Lewis, and Vice Chair Mueller, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the school district highlights from a one-year perspective, and we have Director Tara Tuckrell and Director Kristin Stunkel presenting to us.
Yes, hello. And we are excited this evening to share with you a video. And, but first, we'll start off with Vice Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. Thank you for inviting Director Tuckrell and myself to present the district highlights for this past school year. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. This evening, I believe that you will see all of our core values reflected in our presentation: community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This is an informational update. There are no governance questions. And with that, I'll stop sharing, and we'll go to the video.
Sorry, I think there was a little lag in it from the video and the music. It really does align when you listen to it. So we will post it online to make sure you have the original, but when you put it on Zoom, the rate of it going, I think it lagged a little behind. But we are opening it up to questions, and we will post it so that it's easier to see.
Great, thank you. It's a great video. Comments or questions from the board?
Thank you. I was just gonna ask if it was gonna be posted. It's wonderful, so thank you very much for doing that.
It was amazing to see how much, you know, just a good reminder of how much we, within the district, and especially, you know, all of the admin teams and the staff worked really hard to make things feel as normal as they possibly could for students, especially after the last few years and being back in school for the first time for many of them. So I really appreciated the video. That was really wonderful.
Yeah, great highlights. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else from that team, I suppose? If not, we'll move on to the pre-AP Pilot Update with Director Tuckrell.
Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here today to provide an update on the pre-AP or Pre-Advanced Placement Pilot. And Principal Todd Nguyen was going to join us tonight, but unfortunately, he wanted to share that he's not feeling great. So we worked on this together and collected all the information together, so I'll be presenting his part as well. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed, and encompassing our core values tonight of excellence, integrity, and innovation. And remembering all of our core values are aligned with the Board of Education Equity Statement. This is an informational update, so no governance will follow. We came to the board back in December 2018, seems like a really long time ago, and discussed the possibility of bringing pre-AP to our school district. And when we looked at it, we looked at a two-year pilot to really look at providing preparation and pathways for our AP courses, as well as alignment with APSET and SAT. We had our pilot in 2019, 2020, as well as 2020, 2021. We extended it into this school year, this past school year, 2021, 2022, due to COVID, so we're able to collect more information. We piloted in core classes as well as arts. So we had it in English 9 and 10, math, social studies, dance, visual arts, music, and theater. There was a cost for piloting. We had to pay for each course that was a core course, so each English course, our math and social studies. We also had to pay for consumables, as well as a participation fee. Back in 2018, our plan for monitoring the pilot, which we did throughout the three years, was conducting pre-AP teacher meetings. We met with them almost monthly to check in on progress and to support. A visit from the College Board pre-AP staff, which they did do in 2019. And then our plan was to give the 9th grade APSET in the fall and spring. Unfortunately, due to COVID, that changed a little in terms of timing, but we are back on track in giving that. Collecting student teacher feedback, and then reviewing assessments. After collecting all that data, our noticing from the pilot, as we looked at it as a team, was that the pre-AP pilot did not align with the Minnesota State standards. This was a concern as the pre-AP took up, was supposed to take up about 20% of the class time. It ended up taking up more, like 40 to 50% in some classes. So that was our big concern in terms of completing the Minnesota State standards. We also had a few concerns with curriculum not being culturally relevant. We brought it to the College Board, and they shared that we could supplement with different materials. So we did that and purchased different material to support. The data that we were able to collect from the different assessments didn't show an impact on the students preparing for their AP classes. And there were many assessments that were required throughout the course, and teachers really felt like it was taking away from the instruction as they were giving so many assessments. And then the last point was a large impact on the budget between the participation costs, staffing, the professional development, and the materials. So our plan moving forward is to discontinue pre-AP pilot. We will continue to work on supporting classes leading into AP. So a lot of things that we've learned from the pilot in terms of rigor and different writing techniques, different supports that we can add in, we're able to do that internally to ensure our classes are aligned into AP courses. We also talked about recruiting more for AP and looking at options to increase our AP offerings in the future. And then we will continue with APSET and SAT. But our plan moving forward is to discontinue the pilot. Questions?
Great, thank you. Questions? Mary?
Was the $2,700 fee, was that just the base? Or did that include the consumables as well?
Good question. That was just the base.
Okay, wow.
To do the course, yes. And then we had to pay for consumables for the courses that needed them.
Okay, so it was a very big investment.
It was, yes.
Thank you.
Laura? Yeah, I was really excited when we got selected to participate in this program, but that's why we participate in pilots, is to be able to learn these things. So as long as we continue to support our AP students, especially with recruitment and the rigor, then I'm glad we tried this, and I'm glad that we learned what we did, and we're moving on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I completely agree, Laura.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one comment is, I'm assuming that we have the opportunity to share with the College Board how the pilot was received here, kind of what our results were, so we have an opportunity to take this back to them.
Yes, great question. Coordinator Desap Abec has had multiple conversations with them and shared a lot of our feedback about the assessments, as well as the cultural relevancy, and the reason why we would like to discontinue it. So we will continue to have conversations with them.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Next, we will, it's like it's the Tara Tuckrell Show today. We will move on to the Every Student Succeeds Act with Director Tuckrell.
I think you moved from me for three presentations into Director Hennigan's for three presentations.
Yep, exactly.
So we run the show tonight. Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbik. I am here tonight to discuss our preliminary allocations for Every Student Succeeds Act funding, which includes Title 1, 2, 3, and 4. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And as we look at tonight, the core values that are included are excellence, collaboration, integrity, and innovation. And our core values in Columbia Heights align with our School Board Education Equity Statement. And there will be a governance. I'll be coming back June 28th, seeking approval of the preliminary asset title funding for the 2022, 2023 school year. And this is a piece that we come back every year for. So every year around this time, you'll see similar presentation in terms of the funding that we're receiving and how we're planning to use it. So the first title that we receive funding for is Title 1. And Title 1's focus is really to ensure that all children have a fair and equal opportunity to obtain a high-quality education and to reach proficiency in academic standards and assessments. And the key activities for this title are determined by the school and district. And for this, we include our families and our community, and parents, and students. Each year, we meet in August, and we discuss the funding and discuss our goals for the school and some action planning, and our funding aligns with the action planning. So some key activities in the past that we've done that we look forward to continuing, and then also we'll add more in as we meet, our academic supports, which include math and reading support, supplemental materials, and instructional leadership support. A big piece of Title 1 is family engagement. So we saw a lot of that in the video as well, but a lot of the family engagement activities are funded out of Title 1. Support for students who are experiencing homelessness or in foster care. And then a piece of each of these titles are offered to our non-public, which is mandatory, that we offer it to them, and then they decide whether or not they want to participate. And this past school year, we had immaculate conception we did participate. So part of the funding that we receive, we allocate to them, and we work with them to come up with a plan, provide materials, and hire staff as needed. So our projected preliminary allocation for FY '23 is listed there, and it is a little lower than what we received in FY '22, which is located on the right. We receive an initial allocation for title, and then once they've distributed them all and we have filled out applications and gotten accepted, sometimes we have a change in funding and receive a final allocation. An allocation for Title 1 is dependent on many factors. The first one is where Minnesota is in terms of economic status compared to other states. The federal government then allocates that to Minnesota. So if Minnesota's doing better than other states, our allocation goes down as a state. And then from there, Minnesota divides it up between the district based on need. So our Title 1 plan for next year would include the majority of it being used as in past years in staffing, and then also providing materials. The second title is Title 2, and Title 2 is really focused on increasing academic achievement through improving teacher and principal quality, and it really is opened up to all staff. So we're providing professional development, and a lot of these pieces are also determined during that meeting or throughout the year, dependent on data that we have. So some key activities for Title 2, our coaching for literacy and math, mentorship for our teachers, as well as other staff, professional development sessions for all staff, PLCs, different trainings that we attend, such as Avid Equity, and then also supporting the non-public. Our allocation for FY '23 is listed there, and it is a little lower than the previous year as well. And down below, you'll notice that we spent some of it on staffing, but then some of it is also spent on professional development consultants and resources and attending conferences, and then a part is given to the non-public. Title 3 is focused on our multilingual learners, and the purpose of Title 3 is to ensure that English language learners are supported with attaining English language proficiency and supported with academic content and achievement. So Title 3 really is a collaboration with our EL department, with Executive Director Niangway and our coordinator Patty Vagos, to determine some of the activities that fall under this area. And they have included coordination, staff development, language support, or liaison, so the family involvement pieces in here, professional development, and resources. And our projection for FY '23 is a little lower. That one might change, depending on how things happen with the first round. But as we look at down below, once again, the focus is on staffing, and then professional development and support. And the last one is Title 4. And Title 4 is really focused in on supporting students' academic achievement by providing a well-rounded education and to support safe and healthy students in schools, and includes a piece that can be used for technology. So our Title 4 key activities, we support STEM through Title 4. We support some of our physical education and health education. Some of our swimming units are supported out of here. Social-emotional learning, including restorative practices and trauma-informed practices. And then technology tools, as well as professional development. So our preliminary allocation for this one is higher than last year. So it's up a little more, and as down below, this one is a little different than the others as they really have stipulations in terms of how it can be spent, that at least 20% has been well-rounded and safe and healthy. So we spend it there, and then as well as technology. And then a piece will be provided to the non-public. I will be returning on June 28th, seeking approval of the preliminary asset title funding for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Great, thank you, Director Tuckrell. Any questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Next, we have a new presenter, Director Hennigan's. Will share with us the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbik. This presentation. So this evening, the first presentation here, Columbia Heights Public Schools Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, all aligning with the School Board's Education Equity Statement. So this evening, this is an informational update. So this evening, this is an informational presentation. No governance tonight, but this will be brought to the June 28th regular School Board meeting for approval as an action item. So, long-term facility maintenance dollars are LTFM. Are both levy and aid dollars that come to the school district. And the state requires that we provide a 10-year plan. And there's areas around deferred maintenance and health and safety. So the first category for our plan is health and safety. And I know I said a 10-year plan, but the focus is usually that, or is this three-year window when approving the plan. So we're looking at our current year, next year, and the year after. So that's what, that's what the state looks at on the plan, even though that we plan out 10 years and project out 10 years, and these are our focus areas. So you can see our health and safety categories. We stay fairly consistent, physical hazards, you know, fall hazards that we may have on the roof, railings that need to go up, other hazardous materials, you know, chemicals from science labs, health and safety management, company that comes in and helps us with our health and safety programming, asbestos removal, fire safety, and indoor air quality. And each year, we increase this category about 3% a year. And so it stays pretty, pretty standard. In the past, we've had some much higher asbestos removal with the bond projects, but right now, we're projecting out. Given our age of our buildings, we have asbestos in the building still, and so every year, we try to take care of some of those projects. Now into the deferred maintenance categories. This is where we start talking about flooring and roofs and brick tuck pointing, you know, door hardware, doors, physical component of the building mechanical. And so you can see for the middle column for 2023, we're looking at, you know, 30,000 in building envelope. You know, that could be windows, exterior doors, building hardware and equipment, electrical, there's always a little bit electrical, but typically, there's not a whole lot of electrical that we do in deferred maintenance. Our interior surfaces, our flooring, mechanical systems. We will see a spike, you can see, coming forward in mechanical systems as we turn our focus away from roofs and our, and our, move our focus into mechanical systems. Plumbing, roof systems, we have the high school roof this year yet. And so in 2023, total 10-year deferred maintenance and health and safety of 1,353,409. So we intend to spend all of our dollars. Again, I talked about the main projects. This year, 2022, we have the high school roof, we're doing some district mechanical, and we're doing a bunch of casework and flooring projects throughout the district for, which would be covered under those interiors. And then projecting out, whoops, projecting out the summer of 2023, which carries from fiscal year '23 into fiscal year '24, that's the other thing. It's a little complicated with long-term facility maintenance. Our main projects carry over two fiscal years. And given that, I reported to the Board before, we've had a negative balance with long-term facility maintenance at year end. And that's okay, as long as we, we work towards removing that negative balance. Again, as projects shift from one year to the next year and carry over, sometimes that, that just happens, so you just plan for it. So we've had a larger negative, or about a $246,000 negative balance. Last year, it was under 100,000. This year, after this year, we intend that negative balance to be gone. And we're looking at Highland and Valley View roofs next. And, and then we're increasing our district-wide mechanical work. And again, continuing with district-wide casework and flooring. And we'll focus on areas where we still see asbestos flooring that we can take care of. So again, this is an information item tonight on our long-term facility maintenance plan for next year and in the next, well, 10 years actually, but focusing on the next, this year and next year. And I'll bring it to the June 28th meeting for action item.
Thank you. Questions? Yes.
Thank you so much for that, Director Hennigan's. I'm curious, have you noticed or are you anticipating any significant increase in cost due to inflation? Or how is that playing into this, this proposal?
Yeah, it, we definitely do anticipate that we'll see cost increases. And really, you know, once we, we plan the projects and we, from the engineering firms that we work with to provide the scope of work, we'll get those estimates, and then we'll have to adjust. But with the long-term facility maintenance dollars and deferred maintenance, there's flexibility. So if I said our projected budget for roof is $700,000, but we actually spend $735,000, that's okay. So, but that does also mean that we may have to push projects off if, if there are too many, too big of increases. Like I said, we can have a negative balance in long-term facility maintenance, which would allow for the project to still happen as it needs to happen. So those roofs at Valley View and Highland, we can't just keep pushing those off. They, they need to be replaced. And we continue to focus on our 10-year plan that we have for deferred maintenance projects, which includes roofs, which includes mechanical, and, and just attacking that as fast as we can, but costs are going to slow it down for sure.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mary. Any other questions?
I have a question. I know that's surprising and kind of coming along with what Mary said, but I was thinking about the very same thing. And I think, Brian, you had mentioned this, or Director Hennigan's, you had mentioned this in the beginning. And maybe you could just talk a little bit more about the funding, where these dollars come from. Because I think as we continue on this year and the next year and the year after, we need to start talking about the dollars and where those dollars come from because we, as a Board, have an obligation to make sure that our facilities are maintained. That's in the best interest of our students and our staff. And as we deal with things like inflation, product delays, product supply and demand, labor, and all of those things that impact, it means that we do less because things cost more. And I think it's important that we have these conversations publicly for those who are viewing at home or may come back to view later. But can you talk a little bit about where these dollars come from?
Yeah, so it's a, there's definitely lots to the question. So they are long-term facility maintenance dollars. They're specifically for health and safety and deferred maintenance. So you can't, I can't take these dollars and reallocate them to other places. So, you know, why are you doing the roof when it's fine, it's not leaking yet? You can pay for more teachers, or why are you replacing the pavement out front? We should use that to pay for more teachers. I can't do that. These dollars are specifically for that. And it is a plan that we submit to the state that allows us to levy and receive state aid for these dollars to specifically do these things. They, so the, the state, the legislature is what created these long-term facility maintenance dollars for school districts. Prior to, I don't know exactly how many years ago, only the big districts had available deferred maintenance dollars. Smaller districts didn't. And then the other thing that's a factor with these dollars and how we get them is the age of our buildings. So Columbia Heights Public Schools, our buildings were built, you know, right around that 1960, 61, 62, 63, you know, to 65, 66 era, you know, that era is when all of our buildings, actually started in '59, but when all of our buildings were built. So we do receive a larger amount of deferred maintenance dollars than a school district that has all brand-new buildings. That would be our size. So the age of your buildings is a factor in the formula on what dollars you receive. So there's definitely a lot of variables in how much we get. And, and you know, again, it's broken down into state aid and levy. So it's, it's, it's two different components that are the avenue for getting these dollars.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions? We will move into Director Hennigan's, talking about the Northeast Metro 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan.
Okay, so. Yes, Northeast Metro 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. So it seems a little weird that we're bringing another district's long-term facility maintenance plan for any newer School Board members or newer people watching. But we are a member of an intermediate school district. In order for those districts to access dollars, legislature allows member districts to levy so that they can, again, support their, their buildings, their facilities, and their, their facility needs in a similar fashion. And as a member, we have a percentage that we provide Northeast Metro 916. So again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And again, our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, again, aligned with our School Board Equity, Education Equity Statements. Again, this is an information presentation, no governance tonight, but we do need Board approval and it'll be brought to the School Board meeting on June 28th for that. So with Northeast Metro 916, they do the same 10-year plan, but really, we're just focusing on this next year's approval for Northeast Metro 916. So we're just going to focus on this one year. So again, you have the health and safety category, the same categories. So you can see those there. Total health and safety and capital projects category of $170,098 for them. That is an increase from last year in expenses for, for 916. And then you can see, again, the deferred maintenance category, the building envelope, building hardware and equipment, and down the list. So a total in this category of $107,200. So a total 10-year expenditure, planned expenditure for this next year of $277,298. So it's much smaller than what our district's is, and we, we only pay a percentage of that, or we're only, we only levy for a percentage of that. And so our percentage at Columbia Heights Public Schools is 3.39%. Every year, we get a full grid of all the member districts and what their percentage is. So our total portion of the Northeast Metro 916 long-term facility maintenance dollars is $9,389. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Director Hennigan's. Any questions?
That was going to be my question, and Brian anticipated it and answered it, or Director Hennigan's, so thank you.
Laura.
Just a couple of comments. One thing that we are fortunate about is, is that most of the facilities over at 916 are newer buildings. And so therefore, the maintenance needs of them are not as extreme as replacing roofs and parking lots and so on. And then the other thing is, is that even though this is a separate district, we own a portion of it. So it is, it is an extension of what we do here. And we're able to collaborate with the other districts to be able to provide extra, additional services that we would not be able to do on our own. So it is, it's, and, and I'm glad we're only doing a little less than $10,000 in, in support for those, those buildings. So if you've had a chance to get over and take a look at what our students are able to experience in those programs, I think you'd be very pleased. They're very, they're really very enriching for students that have these really incredibly high needs. And I'm very grateful that we're able to participate as a district in such a great organization.
Great, thank you, Laura. Any questions or comments? All right, we will see you next meeting then, Director Hennigan's. Well, actually, we'll see you right now. But for that, we'll see you at the next meeting. And we'll see you now to talk about the workers' compensation insurance renewal.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the Board and Superintendent Stenbeck. So workman's comp renewal. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And again, our core values, community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, all aligned with our School Board Education Equity Statement. This evening is not a system information presentation, no governance, but it will be brought to the June 28th School Board meeting for approval as an action item. So I'm starting with a chart, so workman's compensation. You know, these are, these are, this is an analysis over time of our loss, our claims. And you can see that going back in time, we had some larger ones. And then as more recently, toward the right of the chart, we've had a lot less. And what that does is it really helps our modifier mod rate, our experience rate, which just gives us a better rate for workman's comp and overall. And we work very closely with United Heartland and our human resources department most closely works with them on any workman's comp issues, staff that we have, you know, that work with our health and safety committee to make sure that we're minimizing the potential for any workman's comp issues within the district. And so based on our losses over time here, and of course, having staff working remotely for two years has helped a lot. Then you can see this year, or this past year, we've done very well as well. So our experience modifier mod rate is .87 for this coming year again. So anything below one is very good. And given where our rates have been the last two years, moving forward in, in our renewal at this time next year, we will very, we will see our experience mod rate go down again. So that's great news. And, you know, we want to continue to see that moving forward, so we're, we're doing a good job there. And one of the things that I want to note with it is it's not just looking at the past, this past year and the two years previous to that. It's ignoring the, the most recent year and it's looking at the three previous years. So it's actually looking at this block of right here, this, this year. So 18, 19, and 20, looking at that block for our mod rate. So in the next renewal next year, it'll look at these three years. So we'll definitely see that mod rate go down, which will just help our, our rate overall. Now, that doesn't mean that our workman's comp costs are going down. We are going to see a 7% increase this year. One factor in driving that forward is our salary costs have increased. So as our salary costs increase, our workman's comp costs will increase. And this year, United Heartland did have a 3% rate increase as well. So because our mod rate dropped so much in the previous year and United Heartland did not have a rate increase last year, we actually saw a decrease in our workman's compensation, which is very unusual. And this year, we're going to see a 7% increase. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Director Hennigan's. Any questions? No questions. We'll see you back on the 28th.
Thank you.
Moving on to our action items, our first action item is our Health Reimbursement Arrangement trustee resolution with Director Bennett and repeat a performance of Director Hennigan's.
Vice Chair Mueller, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbeck. Director Hennigan's and I were previously, previously at the Board way back in April to discuss how further, who currently does our VIBA in flexible spending accounts was getting out of that. business, started the VIBA business and they were acquired by another company and so we had to switch companies, which we ended up switching to MedSurety and so on April 26th, we brought a resolution forward to the board to move our VIBA funds, which is our health funds, to a newly established trust, which didn't have an Internal Revenue Services Designated Letter, so we could put in this trust for the time being, well now we need to move it to a different trust, so there's a different resolution that we're bringing tonight, seeking approval of a resolution to move the funds to a different trust, which already has an IRS determination letter, it was in your board packet, both myself, Director Hennigens and our health insurance person, we've been working closely with National Insurance Services, which is our insurance broker, and MedSurety on this process, which is the new company that we're going to, so we're here seeking approval of the new resolution.
Great, thank you Director Bennett, I have the resolution here, so I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion in a second. Resolution designating MedSurety LLC and Matrix, makes Matrix Trust as Health Reimbursement Arrangement Trustee, whereas Columbia Heights Public Schools changed its vendor for its Health Reimbursement Arrangement effective July 1, 2022, from Further Health Equity to MedSurety LLC and, whereas MG Trust Matrix was the previous trustee of the Columbia Heights Public Schools HRA Trust administered by Further Health Equity and, whereas Educator Benefits Consultants Health Reimbursement Arrangement with Matrix as a successor trustee of the Columbia Heights Public Schools HRA Trust administered by MedSurety and, now therefore be it resolved that the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board for Columbia Heights Public Schools hereby designates MedSurety LLC as the administrator and the Educator Benefits Consultants Health Reimbursement Arrangement with Matrix as a successor trustee of the Columbia Heights Public Schools HRA Trust effective July 1, 2022 and removes MG Trust Matrix under the Minnesota Healthcare Consortium as the designated trustee. Do you have a motion for this, approval of this resolution?
Still moved?
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Go ahead. Laura, with a second, any discussion? All right, Mary, can you do a roll call vote please?
Sure can. Palmer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Zymet?
Severson.
Great, motion passes, thank you. Thank you Director Bennett, and next we will move to the designation of identified official with authority for MDE External User Access Recertification System Resolution with Ms. Dawn Hoyam.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Mueller, Superintendent Stenbeck and members of the board, tonight I'm in front of you asking for approval of the identified official with authority Iowa, as we call them, this year, this is a yearly process, the Department of Education requires each school district to do, the Iowa is the person who will select those who have the rights to use their, their programs, I wouldn't call them programs, but it's, it's data entry mainly, data reporting for the MDE and also sign off on grants and stuff, so we're requesting that Superintendent Stenbeck be reported the Iowa and then I be the Iowa to add and remove names only for Columbia Heights School District.
Thanks Dawn, so this also is a resolution, so I will read this resolution as well and then ask for a motion in a second. Board of Education, designation of identified official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System Resolution, whereas the Minnesota Department of Education, MDE, requires that school districts annually designate an identified official with authority to comply with State Access Control Security Standard 1.0, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will assign job duties and authorize external users' access to the MDE security systems for their local educational agency, LEA. Now therefore be it resolved that the director recommends the board authorize Xena Stenbeck to act as the identified official with authority and Dawn Hoyam to act as the Iowa to add and remove names only for Columbia Heights Public Schools District 13. Do you have a motion to move that forward?
Abused.
Molly? In a second?
Second.
Second, with Mary, any discussion? And again, this is annually. Great, thank you Mary, can you do the roll call vote please?
Sure. Palmer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Zymet? Severson.
Great, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we will move on to board topics, anybody have any board topics?
Really excited to walk in the parade, even though it'll be in a brand-new route.
Yes.
It's going to be very warm, I'm sure, again, and that is the end of the month, but I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but that's what I thought, it's the 24th, so that'll be exciting and hopefully we'll get to see a lot of our community members on that new route and we'll be passing out the tattoos per usual, so.
Exciting, great, yeah, thank you Mary, anything else?
I just want to do a shout-out to the teachers, this last school year was amazing, especially given everything and I think a lot of us at graduation were really touched by some of the student speakers and one of them that specifically just noted how in Columbia Heights, teachers don't give up on our kids and just in conversations with so many of our young students that just graduated and I know this goes from, you know, 12th grade down to kindergarten in our pre-K, it really shows, it shows that the teachers have those relationships that matter, that they care and they're invested in our kids and I just really appreciate all of that, thank you.
Well said Molly, thank you. I have one board topic and it's hard to follow that, I would like to end that note,
I'm sorry.
But I'm going to have to throw this in there, the lead conference, August 2nd and 3rd, board members, if you plan on attending that, please let Dawn know ASAP so that the registrations can be finalized, so.
But then we're going to end with, the teachers are amazing and we really appreciate them.
Yes, absolutely, great, great year and I hope that everybody, staff, students can enjoy their summer with whatever that looks like to them, but well-deserved.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, here now I will adjourn the meeting at 7:57 PM.